Good morning, everybody. Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. Today is August 17th, Tuesday, 2021, and the time is 9:00 a.m. You'll please join us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Heavenly Father, we know that how we look at the world and its events is a choice, and so today we choose to start with gratitude. We choose to be grateful for the earth from which our food comes, for the water that gives life, and for the air that we breathe. We choose to thank our ancestors, those who came before us, grateful for their stories and struggles, and we receive their wisdom from lessons learned as a continuing gift for today. We choose to be thankful for our families and friends as we see them with new eyes, appreciating and accepting them for who they are. As we look around the world, we are thankful for our troops who serve to keep us safe and their families who silently sacrifice time with their loved ones. We are also thankful for our first responders and medical personnel who keep us safe closer to home. Father, we choose to be thankful and to speak our gratitude out loud in appreciation for the blessings of today, for we know we can always be thankful if that is our choice. And so this morning, we share our gratitude, we say thank you, and we say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Pulled prior. I don't see anything being pulled from the agenda. Okay. First item of business will be public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board on any item? It is not a public hearing. You'll be able to speak at the public hearing at that time. The comments will be more relevant at that time as well. Anyone wishing to address the board? Good morning. Just state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name's Michael Lynn. I'm a circuit judge here in the 19th Judicial Circuit and Chair of the Rupert J. Smith Law Library, and I appreciate y'all's time this morning. Commissioner Hutchinson, it's good seeing you. Commissioner Townsend, it's good seeing you. Recently, the Board has had to make a difficult decision in amending, or at least proposing an amendment, which is the bill that you all will vote on today, 2006-336. We're at a critical phase right now. There's a lot of changes going on in the Law Library. I haven't seen a change in our legal system like the 16 years I've been involved in the law, ever since COVID struck. And we're actually at a critical phase with our Board. We only have three members of our Board right now, of five available seats. We've, we need to expand the language a little bit more broadly, unfortunately, to allow attorneys from that practice in the 19th Circuit that would be appointed by St. Lucie County Bar Association to be part of our Board, rather than just solely limiting it to St. Lucie County residents. I'm a St. Lucie County resident, been one for 15 years, proud St. Lucie County resident. But we've got to be able to conduct business, and we're going to have a very difficult time getting a quorum for us to do our business this upcoming year if we don't change this language in the bill that Commissioner Townsend's worked so hard on with Representative Trabolsky to get it passed. I would encourage you to pass this. I can tell you, my hope is, in the next couple of years, to be back in front of you asking to add a St. Lucie requirement that someone from the bar be a St. Lucie County resident. But we had our St. Lucie County resident resign. We've got somebody that literally just moved out of the county, Indian River County, that practices in Fort Pierce, willing to be a member of our commission that would, or our Board, that would be a huge help to us to be able to go forward and make the changes that we need to change. I've seen the Law Library move from one where we needed a lot of books to now we need a lot of computers, because frankly, the law comes out on our computer system. This is the only county that provides a law library to its citizens in the 19th Circuit. It is absolutely critical that we don't turn our backs on our citizens and we provide them access to the law. It also helps our solo practitioners in our small law firms to be able to have a resource to go to, to get legal research done very cheaply at low costs. We all know that this county is going to grow tremendously, and we need to have a law library here. So I ask you to please keep an open mind. Please pass this, this amendments that we have proposed, so we can continue the business of the people and serving the people. I'm currently assigned in Indian River County. I can walk across the street in my office, walk into the, in the Indian River County Library, go up to the second floor, and there's a row of law books and a computer terminal that doesn't work. And it's simply because they don't have a law library and the folks don't have access to the law up there. Please, I beg you, don't turn your back on the citizens of this county. And thank you for your service. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sheriff, can I ask Judge a question, please? I was the one who actually brought up about one of the appointees had to at least be within St. Lucie County, and I understand that you're trying to move it forward. Is it just the lack of ones applying for the position, or not qualified, or what? Help me to understand that.
It's the lack of ones applying for the position, and I can promise you, I'm going to work very hard with Alexander Gannono, with the St. Lucie County Bar, getting a St. Lucie County resident back, that's a lawyer, back on, on the Board.
Okay. Would you be open to just changing the verbiage? Because we all know how hard it is to change the law, if you will. And, and you've already stated that you would be, once you could get people set on that Board, to go back and then to encourage the state to change it again. And that's the part I'm leery of. Would you at least be open to, with a preference, the word preference, that it be a St. Lucie County reference, resident?
Well, the, the problem, the concern that I have is, I think the Board would have to go back and vote on this, and time is of the essence to get this to the Legislative Committee, to get it to the House, to get it voted on. We're kind of, we're kind of hamstrung by time at this point.
You're the lawyer, but preference gives you that option either way. So that's actually a good opportunity.
I mean, is it, is it a requirement that your Board has to vote on it prior to it coming before us?
It's my understanding, and we did, and frankly, we had to, it was going back to the drawing board and getting it rewritten, so we could get it a, a form to you all to vote on. I, I mean, I, I know Mr. Wilder, who's one of the Board members, isn't happy about the language. I frankly don't blame him. I'm not thrilled with the language either, but I also understand we've got six employees, we've got to keep paying for their paychecks to keep the library going. My, my fear is, if we don't get that St. Lucie County member on board, we're not going to be able to do business. It's just going to slowly grind to the closing of the law library.
Again, back to, back to language. I mean, you're, you're the lawyer, you understand the language, but preference does provide that opportunity either way. And let me ask you this, then, from a, from a legal standpoint, when writing a contract, the intent of the language. If the language stays the same, and you understand what the intent of the Board is, then that gives you the opportunity to intend to appoint a St. Lucie County resident lawyer.
Correct. I, I would agree with that. And candidly, from a selfish perspective, I'm a St. Lucie County resident. I want to see folks, our local lawyers that actually live in St. Lucie County, have a word on this, too, because frankly, we do a service to them. And, and, you know, we provide office space for them whenever they're in trial, that type of thing. So I can promise you that I'm definitely going to be fighting for that fact. The, the issue that we have is, we could easily get, I know, one member right now back on our Board, which would make it easier for us to make a quorum.
Commissioner Hutchinson? We can revisit this when it comes up on the agenda, but this was public comment, so I did give some way.
All right. Then I'll just hold it till then, and invite the judge to be back up again.
Okay. Thank you, Judge, for your input. I mean, we might invite you back up when we actually hear the item.
Well, I apologize.
He needs to go.
Oh, you need to go to work?
I've got to go.
You've got to go to work?
So, yeah. I, I apologize. And again, thank you all for your service, and thank you for having a law library. And I, it's certainly something I'm very passionate about.
And we've been very proud of it. Yes, thank you. And thank you for your efforts.
Take care.
All right. We are under public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board? I see movement? Good morning. Long time no see.
I've been home.
We've missed you.
Good morning. We are sponsors for freedom. St. Lucie County, Fort Pierce, City of Fort Pierce, the Roundtable of St. Lucie County, Children's Service Council, Allegheny Franciscan Ministries, Waste Pro, C.D.S. M. Smith, the St. Lucie County Sheriff, Cavalry Compassion Church, Faith in Florida, the Food Bank, I'm going to get you. St. Lucie County Mets, and Glenn.
Gleaning for Hidden Treasures.
Gleaning for Hidden Treasures. That's her organization. In case you didn't know, or in case you didn't remember, Juneteenth is on June 19th. And, okay. Oh, you got your own three minutes. The Emancipation Proclamation was signed, two, and, and two and a half years later, we were still enslaved. So the troops came from the north, and they told the, the landowners that slaves were free, and they had to, um, free them. Every slave wanted to be free. But why is Juneteenth celebrated? African Americans do celebrate the Fourth of July in honor of the American Independence Day. It's just like the Fourth of July, only it's June 19th. So if you have not been coming, I would like for you to come from now on. We have it at the Recreation Center, and it's a great celebration. This year, we had the largest celebration ever. We had, what's that musician's name? Denise?
Murphy.
Murphy. We had, we had Murphy, and it was just fantastic. So I, I just want to thank you for helping us, for allowing us to do it, and hope that you will continue to allow us to celebrate our Independence Day. We do not not celebrate the Fourth of July. We celebrate that also. But this is a day that should be celebrated, and it was fantastic. I'm going to introduce.
Good morning. I'm Mary Sermons. I'm the founder of Gleaning for Hidden Treasures. I'm also the founder of Survivors of Murdered Victims Support Group, and I'm here to thank the county for the work that they help.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Redo all of that.
If you wouldn't mind, that way, for the record, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. I'm Mary Sermons, the founder of Gleaning for Hidden Treasures, Inc., Hands-on Ministry for Hurting Women, Survivors of Murdered Victims Support Group in St. Lucie County in Fort Pierce. I'm here to say thank you very much for the work that you allow us to do, and especially for the community center that's on Avenue M. and 13th Street. It's at that center that we've had the opportunity to serve the community. And Juneteenth, as Marjorie has said, in awareness of HIV and AIDS, during February, during Black Awareness Month, as well as during the Cultural Arts and Health Awareness Day. And I can say that Mrs. Sermons, same name, cousins, that she does a tremendous job in serving her community there, because she has a love for it, as I do. I have been retired from nursing and nursing education for the last five years, and I've worked harder in the last five years.
That's what happened.
In the community, because we thank you, we thank the city, we thank everyone for helping us, because you know we do have some challenges in our community, in the terms of inequities, in the areas of how, of community health, housing, and, there's one more. Community health, housing, and we do need the county to help us to get done what we need to get done for the people of your community and mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise, will you stand? Yeah?
Don't be scared, Denise.
Okay. This is Denise Sermons. She's been at the Linkin Park Recreation Center forever.
She's only 20 years of age.
Only 20 years old. She's been there forever. Well, you know, a man was telling me the other day that he wa, he was standing at the door, because he was leaving the center, and she walked into the door, and there was a boy that had his pants down, and something on his head, and, and he was just looking like, I don't know what. So he looked around and saw Ms. Denise, he pulled his pants up and straightened himself out. That is the kind of, she demands that, and sometimes without words. So we need her to stay there. She's, 20 years, we've been celebrating Juneteenth, 20. But this was our largest celebration, and we had a great time. And I want you all to come from now on, each of you. We will make sure you know ahead of time, so there will be no excuses. Thank you.
Thank you. And for, for the clerk, it's Marjorie Harrow.
I'm sorry?
Marjorie Harrow.
Oh, yeah. I forgot to tell my name.
That's, we know who you are, but our clerk may not. And I'm going to ask the judge to come back up real quick. He has another comment that will help us move things along.
I think I will.
It's a little unusual, but, no, it's all right.
It was just suggested to me, and I think it's an excellent suggestion, that the Board can pass a bylaw to make that preference language as a bylaw, not necessarily with the language of the bill that you all are voting on, and that's certainly something I think we all would, would support. So, and that, I think, hopefully will alleviate the concerns you all have, which I, I understand. This is.
Thank you for the option.
All right. Thanks. Take care.
And thank you. Judges and Sheriff's deputies get to have anything they want to say up here. All right. We're still under public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board? Seeing no further movement, we'll come back to the Board. Next item is the approval, and we have several sets, so I'll read them off one at a time for the clerk, and then we can either vote on them separately or together. The first is a regular Board meeting of July 6, 2021. The second one is a B.O.C.C. informal meeting of July 13, 2021. The third is the B.O.C.C. regular meeting of July 27, 2021. And then the last is the B.O.C.C. regular meeting of August 3. Any and all need corrections, additions, deletions, or you can choose to approve them collectively?
Move to approve and all.
Second.
We have a motion by Hutchinson, second by Mitchell. Any other comments or questions on the item? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I'd like to point out, and I forgot to do it earlier, but this item was pulled prior to the meeting, item 10C, the regular agenda, Public Private Partnerships Proposal. The item 10C now is county attorney to submit the county's vote on a bankruptcy plan. That's been added, as well as 10F, a public safety item. So those have been some of the changes prior to the meeting. Next item is a proclamation, proclamation or resolution number 21-107, a resolution proclaiming August 26, 2021, is Women's Equity Day in St. Lucie County.
Equality. You said equity.
Oh, thanks.
Welcome.
I like it. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role, I mean, read the resolution?
Resolution number 21107, a resolution proclaiming August 26, 2021, is Women's Equality Day in St. Lucie County, Florida, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. August 26 is Women's Equality Day in the United States, a day to commemorate the 19th Amendment to the Constitution that women, that gave women the right to vote. The fight for women's rights in the United States began on July 19, 1848, with the Seneca Falls Convention, when over 200 women gathered to discuss the issues and discriminations. The women faced, the women faced based on their gender. They believed they deserved to be equal to men economically, legally, socially, and representatively. In 1869, Susan B. Anthony founded the National Women's Suffrage Association, but it wasn't until 1886 that they got Congress to consider the amendment to give women the right to vote, which was denied. It took 34 more years before the suffragists got the amendment to Congress again, aided by some new states that had entered the Union and had equal rights for women in their own Constitution. Women took to the streets to protest for their rights in May 1919. The majority of the U.S. Congress adopted the 19th Amendment, also known as the Susan B. Anthony Amendment, giving women the right to vote. The amendment only became official on August 2, 1920, when Bainbridge Colby, the Secretary of State, signed the proclamation that gave women in the United States the right to vote. In 1973, the U.S. Congress designated August 26 as Women's Equality Day. The date was selected and to commemorate the 1920 certification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution, granting women the right to vote. This was the culmination of massive peaceful civil rights movement by women that had its formal beginnings in 1848 to the world's first women's rights convention in Seneca Falls, New York. The observance of Women's Equality Day not only commemorates the passage of the 19th Amendment, but also calls attention to women's continuing effort toward full equality. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the St. Lucie County, Florida, that this Board does hereby proclaim August 26, 2021, is Women's Equality Day in St. Lucie County, Florida, and encourages all residents to show their support for all women by joining the many organizations that are continuing to fight for the women, women rights, equal rights of women. Passed and duly adopted the 17th day of August 2021.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Townsend, second by Bart. All in favor? Aye. All right. Here to receive the proclamation resolution is Sabrina Taylor of the League of Women Voters. Come on, we don't, we don't bite. Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll take a picture, and then we'll have you speak. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'll give that to you. Feel free to say if you want.
Good morning.
Morning.
As stated, I am Sabrina Taylor and the President of the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County. Thank you for the acknowledgement and recognizing the important role that we women play in, in our American democracy. And so I accept this on behalf of the League, not only for St. Lucie County, but for the state of Florida and for the national and international league as well. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your work. Okay. Next item will be presentation. The first presentation is Special Recognition of Awards to Employees. And I see Ms. Kara coming to the podium, followed by Rick. Carmona?
For the record, Kara DiPiscali, Risk Manager, Enrique Carmona, Risk Analyst. So COVID has been very doom and gloom, but we did have some good things come out of it. Rick and myself, as well as Joe Guzman, had the opportunity in June to go to the Palm Beach Safety Council Awards. We had several nominations for two categories. We had the Heroism Award and the Outstanding COVID-19 Service Award, and we actually had several employees win. So we'd like to nom, we'd like to recognize them in front of the Board today. So we are going to read the synopsis that was submitted for their nomination and have them come up and accept their awards. I would ask if they would allow us to take their picture, and after we've presented all the awards, if they could meet us in the hallway for a picture so we don't disrupt the rest of the Board meeting. So I am going to start with the Heroism Award. We had one winner, and I think it's a tremendous story. So if I may, James Beams is our Heroism Award recipient. Mr. Beams is the recipient because of his quick actions that saved a life of a coworker. On April 28, 2021, an employee severely cut his arm with a grinding wheel while working on a mosquito trap housing unit. The cut caused the employee to lose a considerable amount of blood, and without the quick thinking of James that day, this incident could have been far more severe. Between the time of the incident and the time the first responders arrived, the employee supervisor, James, was able to keep the employee safe and comfortable. James immediately removed his belt and used it as a tourniquet to slow the bleeding, which is great, because I'm a former paramedic, and that just warms my heart. Mr. Beams was able to get the employee seated and kept him talking until help arrived. This helped to make sure that the employee remained conscious. James showed an ability to maintain composure under pressure while applying the appropriate first aid. His quick thinking and heroic actions are certainly worth recognition. Safety training works, and this is a prime example of that training being applied in a real-world scenario. James? Thank you, James. All right. So next, we have the COVID Outstanding Service Awards. We had several employees that were nominated. Everyone that was nominated won. I think it's important to mention that. So I'm very excited. I'm just going to read their nominations. First up, we all love him. He's near and dear to our hearts. Eric Gill is our first recipient. Eric Gill is a recipient of the COVID Outstanding Service Award for his unwavering perseverance while creating new systems for information to flow from numerous outside agencies during the pandemic. Mr. Gill was a key contributor during logistics planning for COVID-19 testing and vaccine events, and executed initiatives to reach diverse communities. Eric also played an integral role during strategic planning sessions. He participated in up to three meetings per week with emergency management staff for the past year to discuss marketing and logistic opportunities for COVID-19 events during the, throughout the county. His extensive career experience helped him contribute ideas that tremendously benefited county, county residents. The COVID-19 pandemic brought about new challenges that communicators had never faced before, and despite these challenges, Eric found hyper-effective ways to get public safety messages to stakeholders and diverse populations. Working with direction from leadership, Eric instructed his staff and oversaw the production of over 10 testimonial videos by local elected officials and community leaders urging residents to get the COVID-19 vaccine. He developed talking points for the message that focused on the unknown risk of not getting the vaccinated versus, versus the known risks of the virus and the benefits for friends and family's by, who choose to get vaccinated. Despite the challenges during the previous year, Eric has made a difference in the county, exemplifying the mission of the county, and has positively impacted people of the area he serves.
All right.
Hopefully, you guys are doing the wave behind me. I can't see. All right. Next up, we have Dana DeFrancesco. Dana is the recipient of the COVID Outstanding Service Award for her exemplified outstanding service during the pandemic. Ms. DeFrancesco offered her time, effort, and energy to the planning section during the EOC Level 1 activation. Her ability to communicate effectively and work synergistically, Leslie, did you write that word, with staff members in a fast-paced work environment attributed to her success in assisting with writing situation reports and incident action plans. These reports were essential for St. Lucie County's residents, administrators, elected officials, staff, and news reporters to be kept abreast of the most accurate COVID-19 updates. During that time of great uncertainty, childcare providers were among many businesses mandated to close, which meant that Dana had to navigate balancing her primary workload, EOC duties, and obtaining alternative, alternative childcare for her toddler. Dana is an exemplary public servant and team player who understands the importance of a positive attitude and work flexibility, especially during these unprecedented challenges. Her willingness to volunteer, take on new responsibilities, learn new skills, to volunteer, take on new responsibilities, learn new skills, prioritize duties, think of others, all in addition to motherhood and family life demonstrate her qualifications for this nomination.
Wow.
It should be mentioned, too, that she wears a suit of armor on other parts of the day for taking all of the complaints from our challenges with waist pickups.
Yes, she does.
I was figuring a big bag of crap.
We have to commend her for that, too, because that's
Indeed, we do.
The empathetic ear and the soft voice on the other side of the phone helping our residents through those challenges is greatly appreciated.
And I might add, that is my executive aide, Susie Karen's daughter.
Alright. Next up, we have Matt Morse. Matt Morse is the recipient of the COVID Outstanding Service Award for all of his tireless efforts in organizing the emergency arrangements for vaccine distributions. He has made the schedule work for both the DOH and the Veterans Administration with little or no notice. He has supplied both groups with the facility and his knowledge of the Fenn Center to make the process as smooth as possible. The public that came through the building were handled with care and professionalism. He should be recognized for doing whatever it took to make the Fenn Center available to the DOH, including working until 3:00 AM to make the facility ready for their vaccine distribution. Matt?
Excellent.
And some of the largest number of compliments have come through for those exact issues from all the residents who had attended the vaccine station. So thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Next up, we have Joey DeFrancesco. Joey is a recipient of the COVID Outstanding Service Award for his outstanding leadership and initiative. Joey took the initiative and started proactively disinfecting major facilities after hours when the pandemic started. Initially, he did not track his time and did not expect any reimbursement for his time or efforts. We convinced him to do so. He continued to proactively spray the major facilities until the special request for active or possible infected areas overwhelmed the after-hours time. Joey now manages two other employees plus himself in response to active areas, almost exclusively during non-business hours. He was able to procure additional equipment and chemicals when there were none to be found. Whenever we take the time to thank Joey for his efforts, his response is always the same. I am always glad to help. Joey?
Alright.
Alright. Next up, we have Sarah Smith. Sarah Smith is a recipient of the COVID Outstanding Service Award for her fierce advocacy for county residents' physical and economic health. Her commitment has been evident throughout the pandemic. Sarah was actively engaged in pandemic response, taking calls from confused business owners and private citizens. Sarah educated herself and worked to provide current consistent information. She also shared the concerns she heard from the public to ensure the county's response to COVID-19 met their needs. In particular, Sarah helped the Economic Development Council conceive and implement the Virtual Business Recovery Center, ensuring virtual programming that met the businesses' community, the business community's needs. She continues to stay in touch with businesses, nonprofit groups, and churches to update them on new resources. When CARES Act stimulus funds reached the county, Sarah represented the community's smallest and hardest-hit businesses. Her efforts ensured these businesses had a fair opportunity to qualify for the COVID Relief Business Grants. She also provided one-on-one support to applicants to complete required paperwork, particularly supporting those who needed help to obtain zoning compliance and business tax receipts to qualify. In early 2021, when vaccines became available, Sarah again stepped up to organize vaccination clinics, coordinate volunteers, and personally call residents to schedule their vaccine appointments. Saturdays, she can be found working in the county's vaccine clinics, and many weeknights, she's in the office after hours coordinating vaccination efforts. Sarah continues to go above her job description, giving her time and talent freely to serve her community's recovery.
Excellent.
And last, but certainly not the least, we have Mike Durett. Mike Durett is a recipient of the COVID Outstanding Service Award for his efforts to keep the county facilities accessible and secure for St. Lucie County residents. During the pandemic, Mr. Durett ramped up his efforts in having his staff checking boat ramps, docks, and playgrounds twice a week to make sure those facilities are safe for the public, and continuously worked hard to address any items on the safety surveys almost as soon as they came in from our safety officer. He has been diligent about ensuring that our employees and our community are safe throughout the county. Mike?
So, a big thank you to all of our employees, those that received awards today and those that did not. It's very endearing to see everybody come together during a pandemic. And Commissioners, I appreciate your time in recognizing them.
Thank you. And simply stated, we, we as the Board of County Commissioners, always appreciate what our what our staff does, always going above and beyond. And to be recognized from an outside agency is even better, or not even better, but but it's a great thing. So I'd ask my Board of County Commissioners to stand and applaud these efforts.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next item is a presentation, a Florida Turnpike Public Hearing Summary, presented by Brian Ribberick from Atkins and Turnpike Project Manager. Good morning, sir.
Morning.
You've been making the rounds.
I do have frequent flyer miles.
If you have a pres- would you welcome to sit there if you like, or whatever's gonna be easiest for you. If you're good there, we're happy with you wherever you are.
I'm good. I can see the monitor.
Okay, very good.
Plus, I've been sitting for a while, so I need
Gotcha.
Stretch the legs. Well, alright. My name is Brian Ribberick with Atkins. I'm part of the General Engineering Consultant for Florida's Turnpike and the Turnpike Project Manager. Also with me today, I have Rex Jung, the Project Development Engineer for the Turnpike, and Victoria Williams, our liaison with the MPOs and government agencies. So I appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you some highlights of the efforts that we've been going on through here. I may be moving back. Red light. Oh, there we go. A little too far. Alright, we'll be going back to the chair.
If you can stay close to your mic or pull the mic closer to you so that whenever you're
Alright, I'm gonna go sit down at the chair so I can
Okay.
Run the presentation appropriate for you.
Alrighty.
So our agenda today is, I'm gonna give you just a brief project overview, just to refresh our memories, talk about the various alternatives that we looked at, kind of what the future is, the next steps are for the project, along with a brief summary of the public hearing that we held back at the end of July. So the project study limits is covers 37 miles of the turnpike from northern Palm Beach County all the way through Martin up to State Road 70 here in St. Lucie County. So one of the alternatives that is always considered as a part of a project development and environment study is the no-build alternative. And it's just like what it sounds. It's not doing any major improvements other than those already in the Turnpike or DOT work program. There are advantages to that. There's no expenditure of funds, no impacts to the community, no additional right-of-way needs, but there are also disadvantages where traffic is going to continue to increase and that congestion is going to occur, and also emergency evacuation, which is very critical for the turnpike in this part of the state especially. So as we kind of look at what our preferred alternative is, you know, remember, we're looking at addressing the traffic needs in 2045. So it's not necessarily tomorrow. It's the future, 20-plus years into the future in 45. Since this section of the turnpike hasn't had any major improvements or widening since the original construction in the 50s and 60s, we also saw this as an opportunity to improve access along the turnpike and the mobility through the corridor. And then, as I noted, the emergency evacuation is always important. And we always want to make sure the turnpike is committed to safety on our roadway system, bringing everything up to the current standards so that way we have a safe roadway, and trying to minimize our impacts to the community as much as practical. So for the main line itself, what we're looking at doing is actually potentially doubling the size of the turnpike. So right now, we have four lanes in each direction, widening out to eight lanes total. And what that's gonna require us to do is reconstruct numerous of the bridges that carries the turnpike and also bridges that cross over the turnpike, including a widening and bridge replacement on the Thomas B. Manuel Bridge, which is over the St. Lucie Canal in Martin County, and also with the new interchange locations that we're proposing, we're adding in all electronic tolling gantries. You may have, if you've driven on the turnpike recently, you see those large gantries that we are currently constructing spanning across the entire roadway. Those are actually set up for the ultimate eight-lane condition. So that's kind of what the road's gonna look like in the future. So we're trying to get rid of the toll plazas at each of the interchange ramps, and we'll be tolling you through the those main ganries as you travel on the main line. And then lastly, something very important to, especially to the communities adjacent to the turnpike, is the potential noise barrier locations. That's always a concern that we've experienced throughout our system. So from just looking at the typical section, you know, this is what you're very familiar with today. It's the four lanes, two lanes in each direction. What I really want to point out here that's a constraint for us is that purple area. It's Florida Gas Transmission. The Turnpike and DOT have an agreement with Florida Gas Transmission that allows us to do what we can and can't do within their area. And this is a big challenge for this segment because we have three gas lines in that area. So that width can expand and contract from a minimum of 75 feet to, you know, maximum of 100, 120, 150 feet. So it provides some challenges for us. So this is what the ultimate section looks like. And just what I really want to point out here is that we are keeping, holding that eastern edge and moving everything to the west because of that Florida Gas Transmission line. We can't build on top of them. So that's what the widening ultimately will look like to the west. So from the interchange perspective, you know, there are several interchanges along, existing interchanges along this stretch, down at Martin Highway, then at Becker Road, just as you cross into St. Lucie County, Port St. Lucie Boulevard, and then finally, State Road 70, Okeechobee Road, at the northern limits of our study. And as I mentioned, during this effort, we did look at potential new, two new interchange locations that we are studying. There's one at Crosstown Parkway, which is right near the Service Plaza on the south side. That'll be a partial interchange to and from the south. It's envisioned as a reliever to Port St. Lucie Boulevard interchange. And then finally, one Midway Road, just north of Crosstown and south of State Road 70. From a future funding standpoint, you know, the DOT looks at five years into our work program, and based on our 20, fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '26 program, we have several projects that are currently programmed for design only. The first segment is the widening from Martin Highway up to Becker Road, and that's programmed for design in 2025. And then we have improvements at the Martin Highway interchange itself down in Stewart, and that's for design in 2023. And I just want to note that that's design only in our five-year plan. We don't know when the bulldozers are coming out yet. That has not been programmed. And I know that's probably more critical to the citizens, knowing when those, when that construction is going to occur. And I don't, don't have my crystal ball isn't, is fuzzy beyond that five years to when that might occur. So the public hearing, as we mentioned, we conducted it back on July 22. We gave multiple different options for the citizens to attend. We had two in-person locations, one in Martin County and one in St. Lucie County. Both of them were at the Indian River State Colleges in those communities. You can see here, we had about 80 folks attend both of those in person. And then we also provided a virtual online platform that you could watch from your comfort of your home or wherever you were in the world. We had about 100 folks attend that, and then there were a few folks that just called in the listen-only option. That way they could at least listen to the presentation and the discussion that was ongoing, along with the public comment period. So kind of summarizing the comments, it's probably no surprise that, as I mentioned earlier, traffic noise is our primary concern along the turnpike. As I say, nine out of 10 comments are about noise that we receive, and the 10th one's probably about noise. They just don't know it yet. It's something that we know is very, very prevalent on the turnpike. And then the remaining kind of summary of the comments was that it was the timing of the interchange improvements, what those interchange improvements were, how they're impacting the individual citizens. So the information was on the website that we have for the project. It's treasurecoastturnpike.com. If you go on that website, all the information that was presented at the public hearing is provided on that website. If you click on the little green link there, the public hearing exhibit room, it'll pop up at a new window, and there's all the boards and the presentation slides that we have there, plus the public hearing video that was recorded during the webinar is uploaded on the website. So that way you can go back and watch it at leisure at your home. And the turnpike always encourages public comment. So feel, you know, feel free to reach out either via the website. There's a comment form on the website itself. And then also, my contact information is available on the website to directly email me or give me a phone call. And with that, that's the end of my presentation.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Because I'm gonna ask, we have an agenda item at the end of the agenda, that as we discuss this, about possibly bringing my letter forward to discuss after we dispense with this discussion. Commissioner Hodgson, it looks like you have a
Well, I was gonna go down the road you're going down on
Oh, okay.
On the letter and stuff. And because I'll have a lot of comments in regards to that letter. I was at that meeting along with members of our staff. So, and I've yet to get any answers to the questions that I had asked, nor even reflected within your presentation. So I'll do them here publicly again, and maybe by then we'll get an answer before we vote on the letter, if that's all right with you.
Chair, please. Comment from the board.
There seems to be, what's on the website and what's been discussed in the past with our staffs and so forth, that there's a difference of what's being shown on the website because I've yet to get clarification or confirmation to the fact that 15 bridges that are being replaced, you're not telling everybody that the Midway Road Bridge is not included. Every bridge is up for replacement except that one. Is that a yes or a no?
Because the Midway Road project is currently in design under four lanes, the PD&E study is assuming that that is complete through whatever means and methods and agreements have been in place. And so we're viewing that as an existing condition for this, for the purposes of this study.
Say it in layman's terms, please. Just a simple yes or no. Are, is the Midway Road overpass going to be included in the replacements of the turnpike?
It is not because it's gonna be assumed that it's already been replaced because it's
By whom?
In the project stage.
By whom? By the county?
By whatever means and methods have been done, have been agreed upon. The project is right in the DOT world. We're in the second step with the PD&E study. The Midway Four-Lane Widening is in the next step with design. So the assumption that the PD&E study did was, okay, that is further along in the process than we currently are. That is gonna progress faster than our project. So that bridge, as I said, is the assumption that it could, it will be built before we
Is the turnpike, okay, let me ask it simply. Who's paying? Is the Turnpike Authority going to partner with the county?
The turn-
Sooner rather than later?
The turnpike has always been open to a partnership until a, as I call it, a deal is presented to the turnpike. We cannot bring that to management as to what the turnpike's fair share is.
Well, considering we've already spent a half a million dollars on design and engineering on the, on the original bridge, and now the request is to actually widen the bridge and heighten the bridge, that's really not our, our issue. So I know that, you know, you're getting these questions. So just so you know, we all have deep respect for you and for FDOT and what we do together. But we also, as Commissioners, continue to try and find ways to move our personnel and people around this county and all of the future development, including the intermodal distribution centers, the manufacturing centers. This is a heavy jobs corridor identified more than 10 years ago, and now we're starting to see that influx of new design, a million square feet, you know, a mile down the road about. So, so the turnpike needs to come to the table yesterday, since we've already invested a half a million dollars on the design and engineering. So Commissioner Hodgson, I'm gonna give it back to you.
If I could, because we've got, this is the consultant, and I've, you've got the Turnpike Authority representatives and DOT, and I think they need to be at the table as part of this discussion.
Um, yes, Commissioner, good morning. My name's Rex Jung. I'm the Project Development Engineer. Yes, we already- engineer. Yes, we already bring this concern to management. And like Brian say, we never say no to partnership with, with, with the county. So to answer Commissioner's question, I believe that our previous discussion with, with county staff is that county need to come up some plan. We want to do partnership, how to do partnership. So I guess there's some misunderstanding, county expecting we come up something to step forward to do the, to, to, to discuss the partnership. However, from our perspective, we thought that's county's role to initiate that. What's, what's your plan to do the partnership with the turnpike?
Well, the partnership requires working together.
Yes.
And we're going into the design phases. And I've got staff here, so if I'm misspeaking, you better step up. And that's where we're running into the problems. There's no coordination with us moving forward in the design of what the Turnpike Authority is doing, or what they're going to do as far as us moving forward on the design. The idea keeps changing. Do you understand? And, and I find it a slap in the face to St. Lucy County that we're not even included in it, whether it's existing or not. One bridge, one road, and all of that length that's being done, the main one is being left out. So there's a lot of concern on my part, and I've talked to upper management. I have met with the state DOT secretary along with the Turnpike Authority. So I don't know where it's not coming down the line. But somewhere, there needs to be a little bit more coordination done on behalf of both the turnpike and the DOT in regards to our county staff so we can move forward in that design. That's where the breakdown's happening. And Selena, thank you for stepping up. Did I misquote or missay anything?
No.
From what I'm understanding.
No, Commissioner, you're right. I do have some updated information that just came this morning, so you're aware. I did reach out to both the DOT and the turnpike to try to get a meeting for, for us to meet, you know, just kind of engineer to engineer without our consultants so that we can work out, because there's a lot of things that, you know, you know, we need to discuss more or less internally. So DOT reached out to me this morning again, and Mr. Zhang is also invited on that. I think we're going to try to plan a meeting with, with the three agencies, the DOT, the Turnpike Authority, and...
Hold the microphone down to yourself.
Okay.
That's better.
And, and with county staff. And we're going to try to work out any residual issues and identify how we move this project forward. I have talked with our consultant, and they are developing the proposal to complete and, and, and for the Midway Turnpike Interchange to complete the design. And, and so then we can start to identify some of these ways of how we're going to approach the, the turnpike for partnership and, and how we're going to make this project a reality. And that just happened this morning, that I got an email from the DOT.
How many weeks later?
And...
All right, thank you for that, thank you for that update. And I know we've got that letter on, but I'm, I'm really concerned because your website shows totally different, the maps and so forth, than what we're being told, than what the public is seeing. So again, this is one of those deja vu moments that we did with the Army Corps. Somebody needs to get on the right page. Somebody needs to put the correct information out there because they don't match. They're not syncing up at all.
And, and I would go back to, you know, we've been on the TPO, well, since I've been here, and somebody else has been here longer. But we've all agreed that the Midway Road is a huge part of our future development from economic development standard. We have now, it's listed as Indian River Packing House, but it's, it's now contender manufacturing. So the number of the thousands of trucks and vessels that are going to be coming in and out of there is going to add to the traffic count. I don't know where the traffic counts came from. They're certainly not in tune with what we have in, in the chute. We have a major wave park and, and a community being developed just to the west, a couple of miles, a million square feet of Amazons going in right there at 95, between the turnpike and 95. There's going to be a thousand trucks in and out of that facility every single day. And they're going to want to access the, the turnpike and not have to go up to Fort Pierce. And so it just, it has to make sense. We have several developments that are coming through with thousands, 4,000 homes and, and, and commercial facilities going in just near Glades Cut Off and Midway, Midway Road. The fire district is building Station 18 right there at Milner, which we do a lot of access to the turnpike in, in recovering and, and helping those folks in accidents on, on the turnpike. So, so we are actually, from the fire district's standpoint, spending $6 million putting apparatus and personnel, being able to achieve, you know, rescues on the turnpike and 95. And that access is going to be incredibly important. One of the designs I saw showed the, the entry point to the north as, for, for a, a large truck, a Quint, it's going to be tough making those turns at, at any kind of rate of speed. So that design, I think, needs to be looked at. I don't know, is that being talked about? Because I, I don't know where you guys are in that conversation, but the design I saw has a steep curve coming off of Midway to the north. So...
The design that the Turnpike Authority showed in, in their presentations is preliminary. And, and we recognize that those, those things are going to have to be looked at as we finalize that design.
Commissioner, just following up on what you said, because you're hitting on some very good points, and it's part of my frustration with it. These are not new. They've, our staff has repeated these over and over. But even on the design, preliminary or not, as it's moving through, it almost gets written in stone. Then that's my concern because it's showing you're taking out part of just approved huge economic driver in the county. You're taking out part of their property, when we had already paid for and designed the tight diamond part in that, which kept that at bay, and we didn't have to worry about that. And yet, on your own website and in your presentations that I've sat through, it's still showing up on there. So I thought everybody was in agreement, and we're getting down the road, and there's no agreement. So something, that's not what's, that's what's coming across. So please understand, it's not that we want to work against you. We want to work with you, and that's what we're here doing today, is begging you to work with us on work that we've already completed, with you all looking over our shoulders and asking for your opinions all the way through. And then the next thing I see, I see public hearings being held with nothing that was agreed upon. So...
Commissioner Mitchell, you want to get in the conversation?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions.
Pull your microphone.
Did you want to answer Commissioner Hutchinson before I started?
Yeah, I mean, we, the, we had two concepts that we presented last March, February and March of 2020, the partial cloverleaf and a diamond interchange. Our initial recommendation was the, the partial cloverleaf, which would have zero impact to the contender site. And then it was the county, the TPO, and I believe the city of Port St. Lucie that requested that the diamond configuration that we, that we had be, they, it was the recommendation that, a letter of support to recommend that. So that's what we are carrying forward, is the diamond configuration. Through additional analysis, over the past year, we've had to modify that design, as you've noted, in order to meet all of our requirements. One of the big requirements that we have to, to look at is our general tolling requirements, which has required us to modify that ramp in that quadrant to make sure that we're able to toll the, the, that ramp appropriately, to make sure we have those, that criterion met. So it's, the challenges that we have at the turnpike at times is, we have to do the 10 usual items for roadway and drainage and all those impacts. Then we have to add on the tolling aspect, which is a challenge for us at times, and it does impact, provide additional impacts to the communities adjacent to our interchanges. Thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I have a couple of questions. On the one slide, you put the future funded design projects. You have Martin County Highway State Road 714 interchange. And in 2023, I, I, it's baffling to me that you would feel that's a priority over Martin County to Becker Road. Becker Road, as you know, has FedEx coming in, Chaney Brothers, to name a few. That's huge growth right there. And for you to have something four years out instead of two years out, it baffles me. I, I can't grab my hands around it to finally understand, why would you take something where there's no growth at 714 and not, and just leave Becker Road alone? And to me, that's just mind-boggling. I don't understand the concept. I was thinking ahead of the curve. So maybe you could explain that to me?
Yes, sir. The Martin Highway interchange, based on our list of priority needs that we look at across the, the whole system, Martin Highway is number 38 on our needs list of improvements. And right now, based on our study, our traffic analysis, improvements are needed at that interchange in 2025. As you may know, the Martin Highway is currently under construction, just started construction, I think like last month is when they had their kickoff, to four-lane Martin Highway. So that's what we're seeing right now, is that of the area, that interchange needs to be widened. And once we widen there, it's kind of like planting seeds. We need to start someplace. And right now, the proposal is we start at Martin Highway, and then we're going to sprout and grow to the north with our widening scheme. Because if we widen in the middle somewhere, then we have like the, an inverse hourglass effect where we don't get the full utilization of those additional, the additional capacity in those additional lanes.
Okay. One more question. On 712, where you have, we originally sent, correct me if I'm wrong, Selene, we aligned the road here so we would stay away from that packing house and that boat area there. Well, we submitted that in December of last year. Your proposal cuts right through it.
That's what we were just talking about.
That's what I was just talking about.
Yeah, it just, I don't know. I don't get it.
The, the constraints that the county have versus what the department was utilizing, our constraints are different. So that's why those ramps look slightly different, or vastly different.
Not slightly.
Vastly, yeah.
Pardon? Vastly different. Also, the turnpike has a, a long history of when we designed interchanges. We have designed interchanges using minimal criteria. And what we find in the, the coming years, that turns around and ends up being a super negative, that we have to go back and almost have to reconstruct that interchange back to using more preferred criteria. And I think right now, that's where the conversation is going to, the, the concept that's been presented by the county versus a concept that the turnpike would prefer to build with our criteria that we have available to us.
That's it, Mr. Zhang.
All right. Well, I just want to go back to the importance of Midway Road and the fact that we're spending with, in conjunction with the Florida Department of Transportation, you know, a couple of hundred million dollars over time from US 1 to 95. I just signed bond, bond documents for 40-plus million dollars to advance bonds to move forward with the, the widening of Midway Road. And to not have that bridge on the plan will really stymie our ability to move forward because that's an incredibly important part of the plan. Now, we talked about partnerships. Well, if we go out and bond the bridge and build it to whatever specifications, then why don't you agree to 50 years of giving us the revenue from the, from the interchange? So we can then bond it and have that revenue as, as the opportunity to pay for it. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, so, so those...
I had a yes. What? Yes?
So those are something that we, we need to talk to management, you know, to sit down to go...
I feel like I'm at the car dealership.
Where is that?
I feel like I'm at the car dealership. I have to go talk to my manager. Hold on, I'll be back with your, with your cost of your car. Anyway, but, but seriously, this bridge has to be on the plan. It just absolutely, positively has to be on the plan for, for so many reasons. And I get that everybody sits in their offices and so on and so forth, and they get plans, and you talk to staff. But we, as the five people who make decisions, policy decisions, and actually bonding decisions and, and using taxpayer dollars, have to, have to look differently at things. When we looked at the bridge, and there was a conversation not long ago at TPO, and Franny, I think you remember, you know, we're only taking a small segment of the, of the area that's being looked at for traffic counts. This entire area, Jenkins Road alone, Selvus Road, the changes we're going to make at Selvus Road, the, the issues that are coming out west with the, with the wave park and so on, those are, are outside of the, the three-mile boundary in which you're looking at from the traffic counts. We have to go a step further out because that constraint, we need to start looking at how we manage those decisions about traffic counts. It has to be outside of that. Anyway, Franny, you have some comments on that too, so I...
No, I'm, I did, first off, I, I don't want you to walk away thinking we're all mad. We're upset and frustrated with the fact that, that we've had these conversations over and over, like I said, from the top all the way down. And the frustrating part is to see, see here at this public hearing, that the bridge is not even included. And I can know you're saying, oh, it's because we think you might get it done beforehand. That partnership still needs there. The bridge needs to be on the books, bottom line. And until we get there, you are stifling our hands in moving forward because we're trying our best to work in partnership. Let's face it, it's yours' bridge. It's not ours.
And I think what's important is, is if it's not on a plan, then the outside investment world's not going to look at us and say, okay, well, if it's not on a plan somewhere in five years, 10 years, 20 years, then it's not going to, they're not going to want to invest. And I think that's really incredibly important for anybody in, whether it's FDOT or, or Turnpike or Federal Highway, it doesn't matter. If you don't have it in a plan from our position, you're not going to be able to bring those investors in who are going to want to invest to bring those additional, build it, and they will come, that doesn't always work. We know that. But if it's on a plan somewhere, and we can point to it and say, okay, we're ready to go bond this, this, this particular segment, or this bridge, or whatever, now those outside investors, impact fee credits, impact fee participation, those elements come into play. And that helps us to fund these things. So we are, we are frustrated. I, I don't think there's a person up here that, that is not frustrated. We're going to talk about my letter I'm going to send, just to kind of, to memorialize some of the comments you're hearing today. But we really need your help, and we are, I'll make myself available at any time to meet with, with staff, with FDOT, with, with Turnpike management. I'll, I'll be happy to talk to management. But, but we, we do need to have the partnership. And we have been very good in St. Lucie County creating partnerships, whether it's with the cities of Port St. Lucie and Fort Pierce, with FDOT, Turnpike. We can make partnerships work. We are willing to stand ready and, and make things work. And I'm, I'm not kidding about, you know, the funding source, you know, give us 50 years of revenue, and we'll build the bridge. I didn't even ask anybody up here, but I think, anyway, that's, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a presentation of thought to actually, let's see what we can do.
Can I have just one more comment? You know, you mentioned in your presentation that this was, the turnpike, and it is, is also crucial to evacuation. What you're not taking into play is that Midway Road is your evacuation route out of there. If they need to get off the turnpike and head over to the west coast, Midway Road's the road you're going to take. So to even leave that out of the equation is still beyond me from a safety standpoint. Because if you follow the road and follow the maps, it goes straight over to 70, which is straight out.
And, and Brian, I think I saw part of your presentation this morning at 4:00 in the morning. You were on, on the Fort Pierce channel. I don't know why it was on my, my sleep. But talking about the evacuation route, you know, about not turning every road north, you still have to have that, that ability to bring trucks and gasoline trucks and equipment south. So that was a point well taken. So I did see that. Any other comments from the commissioners?
And then, I guess, one other thing with that, you know, with the evacuation, I think I mentioned at the Fort Pierce presentation, you know, we are also looking at using emergency shoulder use for events like that, where we'll convert the shoulder into another travel lane. So that's also part of that plan. And I know there were several pinch points that our team has been working on, trying to relieve north of here to make sure that we can get that, you know, three lanes out of the southern portion. So that is something that also the turnpike is working on for the emergency evacuation efforts.
And I would be remiss, this, the study ends at, at Okeechobee, I get that. But you have had an offer from a private developer to build the interchange at, at 95 in the turnpike north of, of Fort Pierce. So keep that in mind. So when you're talking about where investments come and go, you have a private developer that's interested in doing that on their dime. So if you're looking at expansion, taking pressure off of Fort Pierce, same thing with Midway, those will take pressure off of Okeechobee. But, you know, when you have a private investor interested in, in, in making that interchange a reality, I think you should be moving on that sooner than later. But that's another aside. Selena, do you have anything else that you want to share, or we're good?
No, I'm good. I'm just here if you need anything.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Mr. Zhang, sure.
Just want to make a comment. So in response to your, your question earlier...
Can you speak up just a little bit? Because I thought the microphone's...
Sure. I'm sorry. So in, in response to your question earlier, I, I think Turnpike totally understand that it's the priority project for the, for the county, the Midway. But, but I'm not saying that's not important, but Turnpike... But I'm not saying that's not important, but Turnpike also have the weight of priority, just like Brian mentioned earlier. We have the, we're doing the traffic annual report to show what would be the location that we need to address in the near future. So, so I understand that you mentioned about the development along the Midway and then development to the west. Even with those development, we take into consideration in our forecast for the entire process, the Turnpike project limit, I mean, entire facility, the priority is still rededged low. And that is something, that's I go back to the point that we talked about, the communication between maybe you and our management to need to sit down to talk about your emphasis and to how important of the project to communicate that idea with our management.
Well, the unfortunate part is there, when businesses want to relocate to an area, they want to have a confidentiality agreement. So they work to manage that process through, I'll use the Economic Development Council, for instance. We don't often see those. So there may be outside investors that want to come to the county and they're still working outside of the county because they don't want to lose their ability to get in play, beating their competition. So there may be a lot more things out there that don't show up in a document. In today's market, people want to buy property while it's still affordable. But if you see people out there and their information's out there saying, we're looking at this, now you've reduced your, or created your competition and getting somebody else to go buy it before you as the corporation wanting to come into an area. So those are hidden things that don't show up on a paper somewhere. But we know that we have identified Midway Road in that corridor as a economic driver. And there's a lot of people out there who are interested in being here. So whether it shows up on paper today, it truly is being looked at by many, many investors outside, so. Anything else you care to share? And again, let it be known, we care and we're not beating you up. We just are very passionate about this because we, some of us have been here for several decades. Okay, decade.
I think she's only twenty, Commissioner.
Anyway, all right.
I heard you nowhere this morning.
Any last words? All right, take them out to the firing squad. No, kidding. All right. Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do we want to just go ahead and move that item up since we already have it fresh in our mind? Who wants to talk about it other than me?
Mr. Chair, I don't have, I don't mind moving it up. In fact, I think it's a smart idea while they're still here, they can even get a copy of it and send it unless we change it. But, you know, I actually think the letter's well written, although I would be much more forceful. And not quite as.
I'm gentle.
Nice. Well, again, it goes back to the.
You can amend it, I'm okay with that.
Like I said, it covers the main issues that were all on there. Short of adding, you know, the requests that they consider at least doing those meetings, DOT, the Turnpike Authority and our staff at the staff level, without the consultants possibly in moving forward and coming to an agreement. And I think what gets lost in the communication is that sometimes the consultants forget who they work for and don't take actually, this is what we want to get, help us get there. That being said, I would, I would just be a little bit more forceful in some of the work.
Well, just for the audience's purposes, we did kind of shift gears on you because this is an agenda item I just kind of brought forward because they work together. This is item ten C two. And Mr. McIntyre, it was under your item, but I kind of jumped the gun there for you.
Yes, sir, I can certainly introduce it. And I would ask the Public Works staff to come to the mic to answer the questions. But as has been indicated, in July of this year, there was a public hearing held on the PDNE study with the proposed widening of the Turnpike from Jupiter, Fort Pierce. The county Public Works staff has developed a draft comment letter, which has been discussed this morning concerning the proposed Midway Road Turnpike interchange for the board to review at today's meeting. A copy of that letter is attached. And then I've indicated that Public Works staff will be present at this meeting to discuss any questions or concerns. The staff would recommend that the board consider the letter, make any changes that you feel are appropriate and authorize the chair to sign the letter.
Thank you. Celine, do you want to add anything?
No, just these, you know, this will be our, the boards, my, my thought is this would be the board's official response to the public hearing that the Turnpike Authority held. And so, you know, you can, this is our opportunity to provide, or your opportunity as a board, to provide your comments and summarize your concerns. And I think we did that during the discussion. This just kind of formalizes it into a letter to send to the Turnpike Authority.
Commissioner Hudson, you had some thoughts on strengthening the language?
Well, just like under the thing on the Midway Road Bridge Turnpike, you know, it says, this is very concerning to St. Lucie County for the following reasons. And I think it just needs to be added somewhere in there, some verbiage on, it is imperative that it be added. Not just considered or that it's a concern, it's imperative that it needs to be added to the list. So that's what I mean by strengthening.
Okay.
You know, I'm not going to dance around it.
No, and I think I said it well, as well here in my comments earlier. So that being said, this is a regular item. With the board, with the suggestions to strengthen the language, to be more consistent with the request, demand, to ensure that the item is in the plan. And that way, we can send it back to legal and they can review it and create the language necessary to imply just that. And Mr. McIntyre, would you be able to handle that process and including?
Yes, sir, I'll work with Public Works staff, but we'll add a, either add a number five that says it's imperative that the Midway Road Bridge be included in the plan or some words to that effect in the appropriate place.
Yeah, I think concerning just leaves it way open that we have a concern, but do whatever you want to do, so. So, does everybody concur in that? Everybody good with that? So we can, we can move this to Public Works and the Attorney's Office for cleaning up. And with that, I'll accept a motion to do just that.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitchell, second by Bart's. Any other comments or questions on the item? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Flip back now. Thank you for the adjustment, folks. I kind of jumped the gun there, but it was, they kind of went together. Okay, I think we're going to come back now to the consent agenda. Is that where we're at? Okay, presentations are done. All right, next item is a consent agenda. Anyone, any board members wish to pull an item for separate comment or vote?
I need to pull eight K.
Eight K. Eight K seven? Any other item?
Eight K six, I believe, for discussion.
Eight K six. Anything else from the board? Commissioner Townsend, do you want to discuss eight K seven first?
I just have to recuse myself.
Okay.
So I just need that to be pulled off consent.
All right, that'll be a separate vote? All right, thank you. Mr. Mitchell, you had eight K six.
Yeah, I received a letter from the contractor objecting to the fee in lieu of a cost. However, the cost was about a hundred thousand dollars. The agenda minimum is only for forty-six thousand. I'd just like to know if the contractor is okay with this lower. I'd like to know if this contractor is okay with that new amount.
I'm not sure who's coming for that one, but.
Commissioner Mitchell, members of the board, Patrick Dian, Assistant Public Works Director, for the record. So the difference between those two fund amounts that you mentioned, sir, this is a, this is a agenda item that actually has two components to it, one of which is the fee in lieu of sidewalk. So that's the obligation of a development or site plan to construct sidewalk. There's a certain value to that. So the developer can choose to either construct the sidewalk or alternatively, if the sidewalk doesn't make sense because it doesn't perhaps connect to any adjacent sidewalk, they can choose to utilize something called a fee in lieu of. This board has seen those kinds of agenda items come before them before. So that's money that is due to the county. The second component to this is that this development was required to donate right-of-way along the parcel frontage on Orange Avenue and along a section on the east side, which will be a future Campbell Road. And there's a value of that right-of-way that's being donated to the county. So what, the total amount of the construction value of the sidewalk is the one hundred and eight thousand, I believe?
Yes.
And the value of the right-of-way that's being donated to the county is?
Sixty-two thousand.
So the difference between those is the forty thousand, that is the net due remaining to the county.
Forty-five thousand.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, and so for the public's purposes, you know, the county has these ordinances in place for a reason. We went through the sixties, the seventies, the eighties, even the nineties, building communities without sidewalks. And then the clamor comes from the public, like, why don't we have sidewalks? Well, it's because they weren't built, they weren't put in then. And then it becomes a burden on current taxpayers to actually go in and retrofit. So the idea is to remove the sins of the past and take those, these opportunities to make sure that we have roads with sidewalks for the future. So this is again, one of those items to try and alleviate the sins of the past, moving forward and changing that dynamic.
Mr. Chair.
Ma'am.
Can I go into another thing and another discussion on this again, what you're saying? But I know there's, there's two different, like you said, Patrick, almost two different things because one is actually sidewalks on Orange Avenue and the other is internal sidewalks to the homes, which I think, what, total up to ten? And yet, we are saying that we need sidewalks within, internal to that piece. I don't know about you all, but when we've done this in the past, and I'm not against sidewalks by no means, but you have to look at your location. And this is what I call horse country, ag community. There's not a day that goes by that you cannot go out Orange Avenue, past the Turnpike overpass and not see kids or family members or adults out there on four-wheelers, Polaris.
Horses.
On the side of the road. And because of that, I'm wondering why we would require concrete sidewalks into what already has an existing horseback barn out in that community that's been built. And they've actually had the horses out there, whether they're boarding or they were there for their own ownership. Why we wouldn't suggest possibly using more horse-protected, if you will, types of walkways versus the concrete? I think that would reduce the price. It would keep the flavor of the neighborhood to out there. And we did this, if I'm not mistaken, out there on the Tilton Road area when we did the old version of the Leonard Road extension. That was one of the things that came into play, that we didn't just have the sidewalks, but that we also accommodated the horse trails and so forth. And it is a different type of material, basically hard-compacted dirt. And then, again, that being said, the comments from the applicant in regards to putting sidewalks on the outside, I agree with the pay in lieu of because at this point in time, there's a sidewalk that goes to nowhere if you put it out there. And again, it then becomes a safety issue for those that are using the sides of the road for agricultural uses such as horseback riding. So help me understand why we can't add that in lieu of, you know, the ability instead of internal sidewalks.
Commissioner, just as, and I'm glad Leslie is here to maybe explain a little bit further. But one of the distinctions that is within the code for when sidewalks are or not to be utilized are the urban service boundary. This particular parcel, this particular site development project is within the urban service boundary.
By how much?
Good question.
I'd need that map.
I don't know, we'd have to look at the map to determine that, but it does fall within it. So there's.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think it's by that much because usually the Turnpike is where that urban boundary line kind of stops, if I'm not mistaken. There's a little jog on.
We will, we'll definitely check into that. The urban services boundary out here is a little bit farther than the Turnpike. The west or the eastern boundary of this particular project is aligned with the future arterial A that will connect LTC Ranch up to the airport connector. So we probably would expect to see some urban development out here, long range. You know, we're talking fifty years, but I mean, it definitely is. Now, if it is the policy of this board, if the board wants to see this particular area reconsider where the urban services boundary would be to retain the rural character in this area, you know, we are reconsidering the urban services boundary as a whole at this time. So this might be an opportunity for that. But we would want to see what the impact would be, you know, around this area, whether that would be in line with the future development pattern as this board sees it or not.
And I'm not against asking for the fee in lieu of for the Orange Avenue side. It's the internal part that I'm having.
The fee in lieu is for the Campbell Road side, isn't it?
The fee in lieu of is, there's two components to it. One is for the Orange Avenue and one is for the internal sidewalk.
Right.
For site developments within the urban service boundary. They are required to provide sidewalk on internal road or alternatively, pay a fee in lieu of. If constructing the sidewalk doesn't seem to make logical sense, because as you stated before, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. It may connect to nothing. So the applicant has put forth a request for the fee in lieu of and staff has supported that. And that's what we have before us today.
I mean, there's not going to be sidewalks out there in our lifetime.
I plan on living longer than that.
Okay, you're going to live longer than fifty years?
Yeah, Commissioner Townsend, there are no current plans for constructing sidewalks along Orange Avenue in that segment. And that is again, why staff was supportive of the fee in lieu of for the Orange Avenue section as well.
But it's to still go ahead and install the concrete sidewalks internally?
No, to pay the fee in lieu of.
To pay the fee in lieu of, to the internal part?
Yes.
Well, more questions were raised today than I think we can accomplish here from the dais. There's a lot of moving parts that already I've heard from the urban service boundary, some of the opportunities for changing the termination or the intent of internal sidewalks for horse paths. I think that's another conversation for another day. But it's the will of the board, so we can either pull this and choose to support or not the agreement that has been brought forward.
As much as I think this needs to move forward, I think that there's still a lot of conversations. I'd be in favor of pulling this to give us all time to go back and have a conversation deeper with the applicant as well as staff. I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference if we pull it and bring it back. He's already waited a long time to get this far.
I think that's the challenge is I think there's, from a policy standpoint, looking at how we change the language on sidewalks, the sidewalk ordinance is a much bigger picture. And I don't even know if it needs a text amendment or something to the comprehensive plan, which may be more laborious than just the idea of changing on the fly, so. Mr. McIntyre, from the standpoint of, that's a, that's a policy decision that seems much longer process?
Right, it really just depends on what we're doing. But if it requires, let's say, a text amendment to the land development code, that's a process that obviously would take a period of months. It would have to go through local planning agency, P and Z, and then come back to the board. We'd have to, we would, we would want to talk to you probably at an informal meeting about that probably prior to initiating any language to make sure we got it right. So that would take a while. If, I don't know that there's a plan, comprehensive plan change, but that's obviously a different process that would require also public hearings and ordinance adoption. Again, we would want to, we would want to make sure that we got it right. So we would want to do that at an informal, I would think, to talk to you all about it to make sure.
So the email that I got from the gentleman was pretty lengthy. And if I recall, he was already indicating that the process has taken so long. And I think Commissioner Townsend would say the same thing. And I think Commissioner Townsend had said the same thing, that it's taken so long. So let me offer this as a suggestion, and I don't know if it's something we can do legally, but we've obviously had some questions about the internal sidewalk. If this were to change in the future, based on this particular agenda item that's come forward, and I'm talking to you, Mr. McIntyre, because you're the guru, could the applicant come back and say, look, you decided just to move forward in lieu of, but because it's being suggested by the board to possibly make some changes, could they come back and request a review of the fee in lieu with a different process that might occur at a later time?
Well, I guess we can do, we can do anything we're motivated to do. And so we could, we could probably add some language in the adoption. Let's say we wanted to reevaluate our sidewalk program in areas that are close to the urban service boundary, that are in a rural area or whatever, and whatever, I'm just, these are ideas that have not been, they're just ideas for discussion. Then I think we could make some code changes and we could process a code change and then provide a, some sort of process to get a refund or whatever down the road, if that's what the board wanted to do. I mean, we can, we can try to accomplish that. So that would be my suggestion. I don't know this gentleman. I've read his letter. He did seem like he wanted to move forward with it. It seems like perhaps the direction, again, we can do whatever the board wants to do, but perhaps process the request as recommended, but with direction to staff to reevaluate the sidewalk issue, bring that back to the board at an informal meeting soon, with the idea that we would provide perhaps some, as part of that, some ability to get a refund or some sort of rebate for the fee paid. I think that was your idea or your concept, Commissioner.
Yeah, and again, that, from the policy standpoint, from a comprehensive plan, from a development plan, I think it's going to have to also have some criteria for the number of homes in any kind of development. You know, five, maybe not, 50 guaranteed, 5,000, absolutely. So Leslie, you've come back, welcome back.
Thank you. I forgot to introduce myself before. Leslie Olson, Planning and Development Services Director, for the record. Commissioner Hutchinson asked how far the urban services boundary extends past Campbell Road. It's about two-thirds of a mile. So it extends, this is not the last parcel. It extends a fair number of parcels afterwards. So we would want to evaluate, you know, whether or not those are already developed in a rural character and that's where they're going to stay. And if they are, then it's simple to retract it.
That would put it basically out there by Brock Smith. Two-thirds.
I did not look, but yeah, two-thirds of them, it was about .64 miles past Campbell.
In other words, excuse me, who the chair?
Please do.
So you're saying this property that we're talking about today is two-thirds of a mile inside the service?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm suggesting that based on what we've just discussed and the opportunity to come back, this language, this discussion has occurred, the minutes are clearly evident, will be evident in the future. So if the board chooses to move forward and a policy change, I think that the applicant could then come back and request some kind of a different outcome. But I think that moving this forward gives them an opportunity to move forward with their development. The sidewalk goes in on Orange and the fee in lieu of, is paid, and then we continue to work on our adjustments to our sidewalk plans.
I don't think the applicant's in agreement to this.
Well, I don't think they would have brought it forward if they didn't have an agreement.
Commissioners, just as a point of reference, the site plan for this project was approved, I believe it was July 28th. It was fairly recently. And as a condition of approval, one of the requirements was to enter into, either construct concrete sidewalks along Orange and the internal road, or to enter into fee in lieu of. So by virtue of the recorded PDS order, that is something that is tied to the development. I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up as a point of clarity.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead. The staff is to approve in fee of lieu of, so let's go ahead and vote on this. We'll pull this item forward. So staff recommendation is to approve with the contingency of fee in lieu of. Is there a motion?
So you're asking for a motion to pull this and move this forward and bring it back? Once you have conversation, you're wanting to prove it the way it is?
I'm suggesting that based on the conversation in front of us, is to pull, have a vote now on the issue so that the applicant can move forward. And then what will happen after that, if we as a board move forward with the informal, discussing changes to the sidewalk ordinances, depending on where the locations are, et cetera, internal, external, that's a longer discussion. So if the applicant wants to wait a year, and it could be a year, I would suggest that would hurt his ability to move forward with his planned development of five houses or so. So the suggestion is, and I'm giving, leaving the option open, that the applicant can come back if this board moves forward with a change to revisit the fee in lieu of and get a refund, if that what the board approves going forward. So I'm trying to do, as they say, cut the baby in half. Approve it so he can move forward, but if there's an opportunity for a refund, this board has that opportunity to discuss with planning and legal as to how that refund would occur if we changed the language of the sidewalk ordinance. Clear as mud?
Well, it's clear as mud, but I just feel, I mean, I agree, we need to move this so that he can move on with the project. The problem is if we approve this for the way it is and saying that it can come back, I know how things tend to end, and so that could be another fight. I'm a little bit more comfortable postponing this to have a little bit deeper conversation with the applicant, because he is not in favor of this, I can tell you that.
Well, you kind of contradict yourself.
Well, I did contradict myself only because he's not in favor of this amount. And if we support this to bring it back, and it's going to be a year before we make any changes, hopefully he's going to have housing in there, and it's going to make it even more difficult for him to argue the point. And I don't believe sidewalks are going to happen out there, so.
Well, we're talking about a complete change of our ordinance, and we can't do it from this dais. It's just, this is not how we make business happen. This is not how we create ordinances. It's not how we should be doing that on the fly. There's too many nuances to the code to do this on the fly. So I'm trying to find a positive outcome, that by which the agreement has already been moved forward from the planning standpoint of approving the development and the site plan, and then given the opportunity for a refund, which would be beneficial to the applicant if, in fact, the board moves forward with a change of the ordinance. And I think that the record will show clearly, this conversation in the minutes, that gives that opportunity for the individual to come back and say, look, you've moved forward, you've changed the process by which the language works with the sidewalk ordinance and fee in lieu of, and if it comes back and says, okay, we're going to put in horse paths that are $10,000, whatever the case, or build them. So whatever that will be, it's six months, a year down the road. I'm trying to get the individual in play so that they can get these buildings built, so that their family can live in a beautiful community. So I'm asking that the board consider staff recommendation on this item as it is with the statement that says the applicant can come back if the board reviews in the future the sidewalk ordinance and fee in lieu of for any possible refund.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Bart. Is there a second? We have a second by Mitchell. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chair, I understand what you're trying to do, and I commend that, but I also understand Commissioner Townsend's frustration, and it's unfortunate that we're, there's no door open at this time, and I recognize that. I would just hope that staff will be bringing that to us sooner rather than later, possibly before the end of the year, so if there are changes, we can move in that direction.
I concur with Commissioner Hutchinson.
If I could offer that, you know, when we get these items and we meet with staff, we probably should have these conversations in advance of the item coming forward, because trying to do this from the dais is not really comfortable for me, but it's also.
I understand that, Commissioner, and there are some of us that do have those conversations. Staff was well aware of my bringing up about, because we'd already discussed it, but I needed it on the record.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Any additional comments or questions on the item? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The next item we'll call as a separate vote is 8K7.
May of approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Townsend, do you want to make your statement before the vote?
No, I'm just recusing myself because I have a family member that works for this company.
All right, so Mr. McIntyre, we're good on the abstention?
Yes, the record will reflect that Commissioner Townsend's recusing will be preparing a memorandum for her within 15 days for her to file with the clerk.
Great.
So there'll only be four members voting.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-1 with an abstention, accusal.
No, 4-0.
4-0, yes. Thank you. All right, back to the rest of the consent agenda. Is there any other items that the commissioner would like to pull for separate voter comment? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
May of approval.
We have a motion to approve by Hutchinson, second by Mitchell. Any other comments or questions on the item? Hearing none?
It was me. The second.
Okay, well, he had it too, so. So the second's going to be Bart's, if you can change that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Let me get to public hearings. First item is public hearing, 9A1. Who will be bringing that forward? Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be handling this item initially. Mr. Parrish is in the audience in case the board has any questions, since this relates to emergency management and the actual certificates of public convenience and necessity. The attached ordinance would amend the chapter in the code that pertains to emergency management system, life support services. It amends the process by which the county issues and renews certificates of public convenience and necessity for ambulance and wheelchair transport services. Of course, the only authorized provider of emergency services is the fire district. These are non-emergency services. Under the proposed ordinance, the board would annually determine whether a need for additional services exists based on a needs assessment conducted by the Public Safety Director. In the event a need is determined to exist, applications for those services would be open during the month of September. An initial certificate of need would be valid for one year, subject to renewal for additional two-year periods. The proposed ordinance also establishes an annual renewal application during the month of July. Under the current ordinance, applications for a new certificate and renewals may be submitted at any time. The proposed ordinance is intended to establish a more orderly process tied to the annual needs assessment schedule. In addition to the changes in the application process, the proposed ordinance also establishes a requirement for all certificate holders to affix a county-issued sticker to vehicles listed under the certificate process in order to better identify those vehicles. In addition, all certificate holders would be required to attend an annual meeting with the Public Safety Director to review needs in the community as well as any compliance issue or licensing concerns. On July 7th of this year, the county staff held a meeting on the proposed amendment, which all certificate holders were invited. Those in attendance were generally in support of the proposed ordinance. During its meeting on July 9th, the county's Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council voted 6 to 0 to recommend that the board approve the proposed ordinance. Mr. Chairman, staff recommends that the board approve the ordinance and authorize the chair to sign the ordinance. This is a public hearing, as I indicated. Mr. Parrish and his staff are available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any questions from staff, for staff? Hearing none? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I thought maybe you wanted to.
I was just going to open a public hearing.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the board.
May of approval.
We have a motion by Hutchinson, second by Mitchell. How many questions on the item?
I do, I have a couple of questions. The, I understand the one year for a new carrier, two years for our existing carriers. Is that the way I understand it?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Ron Parrish, Public Safety Director. I have with me Mr. Frank Amandro, Assistant Public Safety Director, and Karen Kozak, our Emergency Management Safety Planner. Yes, ma'am. What that is, is any new application will have a one-year period in which they would be evaluated throughout that process, and then from that point forward, it would be a two-year certificate.
Our current carriers, will they be two years? Or will they, since it's starting now, will it be a one-year?
Our current carriers will resubmit an application next year, which will be a two-year. So that, they will start over, but it will be a two-year period for which our current providers, that exist.
And just, how do we determine the necessity for more carriers?
So of course, the Board of County Commission makes that final determination. But we go through a process, and as, actually, we've worked on improving that process. And what occurs is, we normally, we have an annual survey that goes out to the providers as well as those that receive those services. And based upon those, that survey is how we make a determination to bring forth to the EMS council. It was a little bit challenging, quite frankly, and so we've added a couple of items that will help us in making that determination. So now, all the service providers are required to submit their run, monthly run volumes, as well as the apparatus or the vehicles they have in service. And so that's done throughout the year, which we will be able to take that information and have some tool to determine whether or not we have enough vehicles providing the service. And so then as well, a new process where the service providers, those receiving the service, citizens, all of the facilities from nursing homes, assisted living facilities, rehabilitation, they have the ability to now go online and file an accolade, a complaint, a concern, or an issue, that we will use that information as well for bringing a determination to the council. So we've made some good improvements, and they're just really getting underway. So we have our website now that's going to be under the EMS council, that's also part of the St. Lucie County website. So we've added some good tools that's going to assist us in bringing you back that recommendation for whatever that might be.
So we do the survey every year? Approximately when during the year, I'm sorry?
We will be doing the survey May of every year.
So we've just done it?
We have not. We did one last year. What we would do in the past at times is allow the applicant to do the survey, which was not effective. And so with this change, we will be doing the surveys every May. So that gives us the time.
So we didn't do one this May?
We did do one last year, yes. We did a survey last year, that's correct.
This past May?
I'm not sure the timeframe that we did it.
Or was it?
We did a survey last calendar year. I'm not sure the exact time. Do you recall when it was? Was it February? It was?
It was early this year, but it was before May.
Yes, it was in February that we got the survey out to the providers as well as those that used that service.
I'm obviously having a hard time with this one.
Okay.
Not with the whole ordinance thing, but with the answer to that question. Did we send out a survey this year? Did you say, Karen, did you say in February?
2020 or 2021. Let's get it to that, 2020 or 2021?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, this is Karen Kozak, Public Safety, EM Safety Planner. We did draft a survey that was created specifically for us to send out and not by the provider. And it was published earlier this year. So it was created over a period of time, so I think that's where the confusion is, is that we did start working on the draft last year, it was published earlier this year. last year. It was published earlier this year, and we did receive feedback from transportation agencies and also healthcare facilities as well. And it was before May of this year, but it was still conducted in twenty twenty-one of this year. Does that answer the question?
I'm not sure where you're going with it, so. The survey was done. If it was done last year or this year, um, I'm not sure where you're going with this question. I'm trying to understand.
So my question comes up because we sent out a survey, and we've just gone through COVID. If you sent it out last February, I would think that you would have certain results that may not coincide with something you sent out in May of this year, or in February of this year. Does that make sense?
It's helpful to know where you were going with it. Yeah, cuz I was just.
I apologize for that.
So there were challenges with this survey, um, with some of the, the, those that received that service. Um, if, and COVID has challenged us all in many different facets. Um, w- we, um, we feel as though it was a great step, um, doing it ourselves and instead of allowing the applicants to do it. Uh, we did learn things from that, and, um, but, and, and we're gonna improve on it, uh, yet again. And so by adding these other tools to be able to assess the needs, um, is where we're going. And that's what, that's what this ordinance is about.
And one last question. Did I hear you say that we are going to start collecting data on a monthly basis?
We, we are doing that now. So the service providers are required to submit their monthly run volumes, as well as the number of vehicles they have in service for that period of time. As well, the ability to go in, for a citizen, a provider, a hospital has the ability to go in and do a, uh, questionnaire survey as far as the experience that they had with the service, which is another tool that'll help us assess the needs.
And Commissioner, I'll share that, you know, the, the, probably four years ago now, but I had significant complaints coming through for several carriers or, or, or providers. And I had no place to go with the, the complaints. And then now with this, it's actually, the complaints can actually go, go to you so much faster. By the time I tracked down who was responsible back then, this is a much better process to get, again, the accolades even. I mean, there are a lot of service providers that do such an outstanding job. Uh, they should hear those, those comments and, and make it easier for the public to have those opportunities.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry. I appreciate what you're saying, and basically, I wanted to, um, make sure that the public understood our process. And the fact that, yes, unfortunately, there will be a complaint sometimes, um, but the accolades as well. And it's important to me that they are aware.
Perfect. Mr. Mitchell?
I just wanna say I'm pleased that you are gonna fix a sticker on the vehicles, because to me, that's universally known, yeah, as we let more, more and more people know that that sticker, just like on a vehicle of a car, you can do one or two years. Companies that have been with you and, and have a history, they can have a two-year, a fixed sticker that people will be able to recognize. So I applaud you for that.
That is one of the other items, so Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We are, we are, uh, we have designed a, uh, a sticker that will be affixed to all of the transportation vehicles, from the fire district through any of our providers, that will, you, you will be able to readily identify just driving down the road.
That they're legit.
Some of the complaints that I've gotten was, has been that there are agencies in here, uh, providing the service that do not have COPCN. So that was another means by which, uh, we will be able to identify that.
All right. Any other questions before we go to open, open it to the public hearing? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mitchell, second by Bart. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Next item will be nine B one.
Thank you, Ma- uh, Mr. Chairman. That's, uh, actually, I think it's nine A two.
I'm sorry, where am I?
Uh, which is an economic development ad valorem tax exemption. Uh, it is a public hearing, as you indicated. It, it would be to consider a proposed ordinance that would create an ad valorem tax exemption for PB Holco LLC related to the expansion of the existing facility at thirty-nine oh one St. Lucie Boulevard. Just before I read the actual application, this particular, um, item relates to a program that's been in place since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, the voters approved it in nineteen ninety-two, two thousand and two, two thousand and twelve, and it will be coming up for election in two thousand twenty-two. It is a way to encourage businesses to, uh, either expand in the county, in this case, or relocate to the county. Um, it involves a potential tax exemption, uh, just for the buildings, not the real estate. It does not involve other taxes like the school district or the fire district. It's just a tool that we've used successfully for many years. In this case, PB Holco, a local boat manufacturing, has applied for an exemption to expand a facility. So they're already here, and they're adding two hundred jobs to its workforce to bring the total number to five hundred and fifty-eight. Uh, as required by state law, the property appraiser has reviewed the application and determined that the company is eligible for the exemption. If approved, the company would receive the exemption on a sliding scale for no more than a ten-year period. The estimated taxable value of the improvements is eighteen million dollars. The ex- estimated taxable value of the additional personal property is a two-point-six million dollars. The value of the real property, as I indicated itself, would not be subject to the exemption, only the improvements. Copy of the proposed ordinance is attached. In, in March of, of two thousand nineteen, we did adopt a resolution which in- included certain economic incentives for PB Holco, one of which was this item. The staff, this has been previously authorized to advertise for today. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any questions, Mr. McIntyre?
I have one, uh, because of the recent, uh, merger or purchase of PB Holco, of Maverick Boats, which, which facility, I thought that.
Mr. Chair, this is the Pursuit, uh, facility that was expanded, so they, uh, they are separate from Maverick, even though they are owned, uh, collectively by Malibu. Um, this, this particular item is pursuant to Pursuit Boats.
Okay, so there's probably an expectation that Maverick will come back for theirs once their, uh, expansion is completed.
Yeah. They've already received one for their most recent expansion.
Right. Uh, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this item? Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mitchell, second by Bart. Any comments or questions on the item? I just simply want to, to point out again, you know, this tax abatement, uh, only, only provides the option when the investment is made. Uh, so this is, this is an opportunity for us to use that tool in the toolbox to attract and expand local businesses, and it's been, uh, incredibly important for our economic development. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to, uh, public hearing nine B one, a resolution establishing inventory of county-owned property.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, Diana Wyslowski, Director of Community Services. Um, the item before you is a requirement of a Florida statute that we prepare an inventory, um, for the county, uh, of the property that is held fee simple and, um, is appropriate for affordable housing. Um, we are required to do a public hearing, um, with this list, and that's why I'm here today.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Hearing none? Oh, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this item? Seeing no movement?
May of approval.
We have a motion by Townsend?
Second.
Is there a second by Mitchell? Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item will be our regular agenda. This will come from administration. This is ten A one. I think we've all seen this item about, I don't know, nine times. So, Mr. Jefferson, welcome back.
Welcome back. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. I'm just here for any questions. Um, as the Chair mentioned, we've, we discussed the projects, the projects. We're asking for approval from the board on the, on exhibit one, which includes all the projects that you discussed. Um, and I'm just here for any questions.
All right. Any questions of staff? Uh, Mr. Tipton, you look like you wanted to say something.
I, I was just gonna share that, uh, in our, in our conversations, uh, as we were workshopping this, uh, we recognized that there were some dollars that were not being allocated, and, uh, I just wanted to, uh, remind the board that it was, I, I believe the consensus of the board, that we would be just holding those in reserve for a period of time. As we discussed, uh, we don't know what any further, uh, implications or costs may come from the pandemic. Uh, we also need to make sure that as we refine our project costs a little bit further, uh, the, the dollar amounts may change, and so we're setting aside, uh, the balance of the funds, uh, in reserves. We'll be dedicated for a project at some point, it, or, or expended, but, uh, right now, it is being, uh, set aside.
Mr. Chair, because we agreed to that, can I, we just get maybe an update at the, informal in December or even beginning of January as to the status? By then, we should have some numbers in and kind of have a better.
Actually, we're gonna bring it back quarterly to you, so it'll even be before then.
All right, thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none?
May of approval.
We have a motion by Hutchinson?
Second.
Second by Townsend. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was an affirmative, Mr. Mitchell? Yes, okay. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is, uh, regular agenda ten A two. We heard some conversation about this earlier.
Mr. Chair, I'm not gonna belabor that, but I do appreciate the judge coming back up and offering the ability to do it through the bylaws, and I would have, be content with that.
And I'll second that motion by Commissioner Hutchinson.
Nicole, do you wanna add anything?
No, it was just, I needed direction on which bill we were going with, and if that's it, then we would go with the original language, which was proposed.
And you're clear about the bylaw change that will support the effort?
And I think we can ensure that Commissioner Townsend will carry that message back.
And we appreciate the extra e- effort on this, and, and this is why the board works as well as we do. We have different thoughts about things and find solutions to, to difficult issues, so. That being said, uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Be a Thursday. Okay. Next item is ten B one, Assignment and Assumption of Lease. Welcome. This is your first time in the, in the fish tank.
Good morning.
Or shark tank, I remember.
Good morning, Commissioners. How we doing today? Uh, airport is, um, uh, bringing forth to you an assumption, assign, reassignment of lease. Uh, this is a lease that was, uh, a sublease underneath, uh, Fort Pierce FBO or APP Jet Center. Uh, it was, the lease agreement is from, uh, Mr. Regal to a company that he has formed, uh, underneath his premise of Apples of Aviation LLC.
Eric, can you pull your microphone down a little bit?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, it's okay. That's better.
And, uh, so we're just requesting that, uh, board further approve the assumption of lease.
Well, we've all met you. We would like your name for the record.
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
If you can give us your title, that way.
My name is Eric Knupka, the, uh, airport manager for the, uh, for the airport here.
And I spoke over top of you, so your name was?
Eric Knupka.
Okay. We'll spell that for you later, Clark. All right. Any comments or questions on this item for staff?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Townsend, second by Mitchell. Any comments or questions on the item?
Just, I'm gonna welcome Eric to, uh, the family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate being here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is ten C one. It was, first was pulled from the meeting, and we did dispense with, uh, ten C two. So we have moved on to ten B three. Uh, and that is going to be, who's gonna take that one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, that would be my item as well. Uh, this is a proposed fifth amendment to the amended in facilities of use agreement with Sterling Facilities. It relates to Clover Park, uh, otherwise popular, known as the Mets Stadium, actually owned by the county. Uh, but the, we have, the fifth amendment basically will close out the project. It's been a long time coming, but, uh, it, those of us that have been out there, it was a beautiful facility, the renovation, uh, county-funded, and the Mets partnered with us, and it's been, uh, quite a successful project. Staff recommends that the board approve the fifth amendment to the amended in facilities use agreement and authorize the chair to sign the amendment.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mitchell, second by Bart. Any comments or questions? I just wanted to point out that, uh, while St. Lucie County, uh, was able to bring, uh, the Olympic, um, qualifiers here, uh, the Team USA won the silver medal. So that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item, item four.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Th- this item will be handled by Property Acquisition Manager, Joanne Riley.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. For the record, Joanne Riley, Property Acquisition Manager. Item ten C four is a contract for sale and purchase of approximately thirty-nine acres located south of Jenkins Road and Edwards Road at the intersection along south of Ten Mile Creek. On February the first, two thousand twenty-one, the County Land Acquisition Selection Committee reviewed the property consisting of nine acres of hydrochammock, eight acres of floodplain forest, including two thousand lineal feet of shoreline along Ten Mile Creek, and twenty-two acres of disturbed uplands. The committee unanimously ranked the property as a top-tier A site and recommended this board approve, or pursue the acquisition, excuse me. On February the twenty-third of two thousand twenty-one, this board approved the acquisition of the thirty-nine acres utilizing funds from the future Jenkins Road Extension Project and the environmentally sensitive land program. And just for your reference here, it's the property that's outlined in red. The property immediately to the east for another bearing is the George LaStrange Preserve. And I'll just tap through a couple of other photos as I continue my presentation. Jenkins Road Extension from Glades Cut Off to Orange Avenue is currently programmed in the FDOT work plan for the project development and environmental study in FY two thousand twenty-five. The St. Lucie TPO Smart Moves twenty forty-five Long Range Transportation Plan lists Jenkins Road as a preliminary roadway deficiency, which indicates the corridor will experience congestion by two thousand forty-five. Significant development along Jenkins Road from Edwards Road will continue to drive the need for a four-lane divided section. Additionally, we have a missing link from Glades Cut Off to Edwards that will serve the needs of the community by providing an alternate north-south connection. The entire Jenkins Road corridor from Midway to Orange is intended to, uh, serve as a reliever for the King's Highway Corridor. St. Lucie County Engineering Staff has proposed that the segment of Jenkins Road from Glades Cut Off to Orange Avenue is a critical piece of infrastructure that will need supporting land to accommodate stormwater runoff from the roadway. The purchase of this thirty-nine acres provides a unique opportunity to acquire land for right-of-way and stormwater needs, as well as the positive aspects associated with environmental preservation, water quality, connectivity, recreation, and resiliency of the Jenkins Road Extension. This acquisition will minimize potential impacts to other properties along the corridor as the design analysis moves forward. The county had two appraisals prepared per county policy for the properties estimated to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Dehan Consultants indicated that the fair market value was one million one hundred thousand dollars. Callaway and Price value was one million four hundred thousand dollars. The county requested Dan Fuller review the appraisals prior to the county making an offer. Mr. Fuller indicated that the Callaway and Price appraisal was credible and should be relied upon. The Property Acquisitions Division presented an offer of a million four hundred thousand to the landowner. MT Land made a counteroffer back to the county for two million dollars. The county took this counteroffer and went back to our appraisers of Callaway and Price and Fuller Armfield Wagner to review the county offer to see if it was in their range of value. Callaway and Price and Fuller Armfield Wagner indicated two million dollars was not within their range of value, and advised county staff to present a counteroffer of a million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The counteroffer has been presented to MT Land. County staff would recommend that the board approve the contract for sale and purchase with MT Land for one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, subject to final review and approval by the county attorney. Authorize the chair to sign the contract and direct staff to proceed with the closing and record the documents. the contract and direct staff to proceed with the closing and record the documents in the public records. The funding for this particular property will be provided by the land acquisition bond of 25%, and the remainder will be funded from the Jenkins Road improvements through Public Works. If you have any questions, I'm available, as well as engineering and environmental resources.
Thank you. Any questions, staff? Hearing none?
May of approval.
We have a motion to approve by Townsend.
Second.
Second by Bart. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This next item is item 10C5. It relates to the county's opioid litigation. We have retained outside counsel, as the board is aware, that's assisted us in this process, along with the city of Fort Pierce and the city of Port St. Lucie. They represent a number of other communities in the state. They, the outside counsel indicated that in August, early August of this year, there was an upcoming required action and deadlines for voting on a bankruptcy plan for, I'm not sure the exact pronunciation of this, Mallon Crock Manufacturing of Opioid Pain Medication. That's among the defendants and named in the litigation. As, that company has sought bankruptcy protection under Chapter 11 and has developed a proposed plan that would result in a restructuring of their business, an establishment of a trust to be funded with approximately $1.6 billion in cash to be paid over seven years to, there's many potential plaintiffs all over the country, not just in Florida. This crisis is really a, it's a worldwide crisis, but certainly countrywide, and so there's a number of people that would share in this, including St. Lucie. These funds would be divided among the various trusts, including governments, hospitals, third-party claimants, and personal injury claims. Mr. Chairman, the county's outside counsel has recommended that we vote yes to approve the bankruptcy plan. With that recommendation, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Bart, you have moved this thing from beginning to end, and you've spent time in DC, and I'd like to give you the opportunity to, A, speak first, but also to make the initial motion if you so choose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I couldn't have done any of this without the support of this board. When it came to entering into the lawsuit, every one of you stood up and said, yes, let's go after it. And frankly, it wasn't about the money, it's about saving lives and working hard to try to save lives in the future. Most everyone I know, everyone that I know of, has been affected by the opioid crisis, whether it is an immediate family member, a friend, a relative across the country. It's affected us all. So, I want to thank you. We're working on how we put this together. I'm working with Deputy Administrator Alfonso, and he is doing a great job. So, I will take pleasure in making that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Bart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mitchell?
Because you were going to do it.
Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Job well done. Moving on to item 10D1. This will be, this, Kara's coming back. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Wow, we get to see you for a whole meeting.
I know. Good morning again, Commissioners. For the record, Kara, Deepak Qualley Risk Manager. Today, we are bringing before you the Eighth Amendment to our Care Here Clinic, now Premise Health, to include behavioral health services. So, this would be mental health counseling services that we would offer for all employees and their dependents on the current health plan. This would also open up the amendments to the inter-local agreements with the tax collector, sheriff's office, and fire district. There is a one-time implementation fee of just over $7,000, and it will be a initial fee of $1.13 per employee per month for the first year, and it will go up by three cents every year thereafter until 2023. Any questions that I can answer? I know we walked this quite a few months ago, so it's a little stale, but just wanted to bring it before you today for approval.
Okay. Any questions, just uh, just to simply say that, you know, adding COVID into the world's issues, there's not a corner of this country that doesn't have an issue with trying to help people in crisis.
Absolutely.
So, this is really good to bring forward, and our partners in this, some of which see some very ugly things every day at their jobs. So, being able to keep those folks healthy as well is an incredibly important aspect of this.
You know what? If your heart hurts, you go to a doctor, and if your head hurts, you go to a doctor.
Well said. Absolutely.
All right. I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Bart, second by Mitchell. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to Planning and Development Services, the administrative approval update. Welcome back.
Good morning again. Okay, so, that is incorrect. It's not the May and June. But this is, this is last month's approval for, that was performed by Planning and Development Services. We're going to start out with King's Commercial Center. This is in the King's Highway Industrial Park, just north of Angle Road, and this is a new flex industrial space. Next, we have Palmetto Flats, which we were all discussing earlier. And you'll see on the bottom side of that picture where you see that wetland, where we were talking about where Campbell Road is and where the future of Arterial A is, it's on that bottom side there, according to our current mapping. These things can always change. Then, we have a Class A mobile home at the far southwestern corner off of Glades, and a minor adjustment to a minor site plan. Basically, this is a lotline adjustment. We also have Island Dog Spa out in Nettles Island for people's dogs who live in Nettles. This is a nice neighborhood commercial use that isn't listed in neighborhood commercial. Then, we have St. Lucie Business Park, PNRD Executive Order Extension. That one is at South US1.
Yes, near Savannah.
Yeah. That's it for this month? Do you have any questions on any of those projects?
Any questions on those projects? It's really not on the project, but when I came to my seat, I did receive a PDF from last night from the applicant for our later meeting.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to address this now? Because they're asking for a continuance. I know that we're going to have to open that meeting regardless, so I'm, I'm not sure why it's on my desk today, here, now, but...
Unfortunately, we've already advertised the hearing. If we hadn't done that, we could have acted now. We're going to need to open the hearing like we always do. The board will of course have to decide whether to grant the continuance or not. It's my understanding that at least initially, the HOA opposed the continuance. We'll find that out, I guess, tonight. So, you'll need to listen to that. This is not the appropriate time to do that. You'll need to consider it. You have broad discretion to grant continuances. You'll need to consider the reasons, whether there's any prejudice, and then you'll need to be thinking about where time and date certain. The applicant is requesting September 21st. It's my understanding that's a date that kind of is going to maybe conflict with your Florida Association of County conferences, their September conferences. So, you might want to be thinking about if you are in favor of the continuance, and that's of course up to you, a different date, maybe September 28th. You would want a night meeting, 6:00. The next night meeting after that is October 5th, so those are dates that you could be considering, but that discussion really needs to be held at 6:00 tonight.
Okay, well, we will do just that, but just before we close up here, is it's the board's opportunity, if we so chose, we could move a morning meeting to a night meeting to accommodate if that was something the board considers tonight.
You could. I was not at the planning and zoning meeting when this was held, but I was told that the room was full of people, and it took a lot of time. So, you would want to consider that. You're going to, you would want to consider that in terms of scheduling it. That's why I think we tried to set a standalone meeting for tonight and not, not do it and move the, this morning's meeting to the night, because just so many people were, came to that other meeting. So, it's a thought for you to consider.
Well, this one's been squirrely all since the beginning, and so has the applicant, has the, the opposers, if you will, the property, the owners' association, the POA, have they been spoken to? Have they, do they know that this letter came last night after hours?
They did.
Okay.
They were sent this, this continuance at the same time. The, it was sent to you, Mr. Chair. I didn't bring my glasses up here.
I think it's like 6:23 or something. I didn't leave until late, so...
It appears that Ms. Sherlock has responded. Cory, what does it say?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Cory Benton, Assistant Planning Manager, for the record. Ms. Sherlock, representing the POA, has submitted a letter objecting to the applicant's request for a continuance.
Okay. All right, well, that's something that we can consider now. We have several hours between now and tonight to, I just wanted the board to know that this letter did come in, if they hadn't gotten it, because I think we all came in and came right here. Okay. All right, so I just want to make sure that information goes to the board. All right, thank you very much. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to the item F, Public Safety, the medical test.
We still have E2.
I'm sorry?
Might want to do E2.
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize. Usually, usually after Leslie does hers, there's nothing more, but... All right, next item is E2, the Pursuit Boats, Major Adjustment to Site Plan. Again, this has been one of those where cooperation with applicants and moving and working with the county and planning department has been significant in finding positive outcomes. So, Mr. Benton, welcome back.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Cory Benton, again, for the record with Planning Development Services. I'm joined by Thandra Lanis, our business navigator, to present this exciting update to the Pursuit major site plan in our community, highlight some of their progress in expanding and hiring folks here locally, and the next steps on the horizon for their development plan. Again, Agenda item 10E2, presenting a major adjustment to the major site plan. This board in 2019 granted a major site plan adjustment to facilitate a substantial expansion to Pursuit Boats, not only site plan area, but also their building footprint in various phases. They're filing a request to expand and change that for some minor cleanup, which we'll highlight this morning.
Good morning, Thandra Lanis, business navigator for the record.
Pull your microphone closer to you, or speak a little louder.
Don't wish out too much, but there we go. I can hear it now. As we saw in one of the earlier agenda items this morning, sometimes we work with our targeted industry business partners by providing financial incentives that help them to expand or relocate into St. Lucie County. But oftentimes, what we find what they really need is time in order to help them to respond to an opportunity in the marketplace, and Pursuit has had just one of those opportunities. And we were able to use our expedited review and our pre-application process as tools to help them get there. So, in May, they were in for a pre-application. We were able to identify any possible obstacles or challenges to the project, resulting in a clean submittal in June, June 21st, and I am proud to point to only an eight-week turnaround from then to today in getting this amendment to you for approval. And I'd also like to recognize the partners that we have in other departments and other agencies for their commitment to doing those quick turnarounds that help us to provide the support to our partners. The result is, is that as you have seen all along the St. Lucie Boulevard Jobs Corridor, you're seeing expansions in the airport industrial park and all along the St. Lucie Boulevard, as these businesses ranging from Eric's Industries to Phoenix Metals, to Wallaby Manufacturing, to some of the bigger names that you're familiar with, like A1 Trust and Maverick Boats, and of course, Pursuit Boats. This one is particularly exciting, because although all those businesses have had expansions in the last couple of years, Pursuit is now entering into Phase Two, and so this is showing that continued commitment to growth in St. Lucie County, which we're very pleased with. To summarize what they are doing in this round, Phase Two, this cleanup sort of represents a couple of things. One is cleaning up the site plan to better reflect what's really happening on the site, and two is to increase the efficiencies on the site to maximize their operation. This is allowing them to manage how they're producing product while they're continuing to grow and expand. So, this particular development includes the transfer of the 42 acres that Cory will tell you a little bit more about, the wonderful habitat preservation going on there. It also sort of clarifies and cleans up the different phases. You used to see lots of As and Bs and Cs. It's a much cleaner four-phase plan now. It also provides some additional parking that supports the completion of Phase One and puts in place a temporary guard structure that helps manage the flow of traffic on the site during construction. Perhaps most exciting is that it does include some reconfiguration of the boat mold production building. It's a little bit larger, allows a little more flexibility, and also provides parking in that Phase Two. And then, there's some miscellaneous details that are now cleaned up and memorialized, including the location of the monument signed and all that, which we're going to let Cory go into some greater detail about the history and the specific activities in this phase.
Thank you, Thandra. You know, she highlighted the key partnerships and the collaboration, not only through the applicant, state, local government, and our stellar team here, and again, a commitment by this board in pursuing a balance of economic development, sustainable growth, and habitat and environmental preservation. And so, we've seen and experienced very successful outcomes with the Pursuit project. As we know, the county, through our lands acquisition team, acquired the 10 acres of habitat preservation area south of Pursuit Site Plan, and Pursuit dedicated roughly 32 acres for tree and habitat preservation area to the west, supports preservation and habitat for scrub jays amongst other species in our community. It's been a very successful venture. Again, as we've experienced the substantial expansion to Pursuit's manufacturing plant, their capacity, we've endured the advantages of employment expansion. Pursuit currently holds over, well over 500 employees in our community, is continuously pursuing additional folks, whether they're green and looking for the opportunity to learn and tap into skilled labor opportunities, or folks who would like to expand their career and take their skills to Pursuit's operation line. And here are photographs of their expansion that was completed in 2020, over 180,000 square feet devoted to manufacturing center console vessels between the length of 23 and 43 feet. And again, the successes in providing for exports from our community, bringing in much-needed dollars and employing skilled jobs both onsite, but also with ancillary and tertiary industries here on our community. We'll quickly highlight the expansion of Pursuit's facility, which was established initially in 1983, and they're a multi-generational employer here in our community and continue to make substantial investments. They hold currently roughly 385,000 square feet devoted to manufacturing and operations and warehouse. This next phase, Phase Two, which has the most significant changes with this adjustment, over 100,000 square feet devoted to mold production for their vessels and resin tank covered storage. Phase Three will include additional prep staging and manufacturing space on top of the Phase One building, and then Phase Four includes an additional access point, new guard station, and over 200,000 square feet of additional space, bringing their overall total to over nearly 785,000 square feet devoted to manufacturing in our to all the prior landscape requirements, habitat preservation, and stormwater requirements. So, in sum, the staff is recommending that the board and county commissioners approve this request, as it's consistent with our land development code and comprehensive plan. And again, we appreciate your consideration and vote of approval on the economic incentives to continue to support this industry in our community.
All right. Thank you. It's a great presentation. Any questions of staff? I just want to make a clarification. You said financial incentives. I just, for the public's purposes, we don't give cash away. We've not done that in more than a decade. We are reimbursement-based, tax incentive, tax abatement incentives, that the incentives don't come unless the investment is made. So, lessons learned from the past. We do not give tax cash to those new developments that are coming in or expanding. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mitchell, second by Hutchinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. As we come near to the end of the agenda, next item was public safety and medical testing and vaccination utility van. Mr. Ramonro. Welcome back.
Always hate being last, right before lunch, right? I'll try to make it quick.
So hurried.
Chair Commissioners, Frank Amandro, the Assistant Public Safety Director. The subject is the medical testing and vaccination utility van. Public Safety Department purchased this van with the CARES Act funding in order to provide COVID-19 testing and vaccinations for the underserved communities within St. Lucie County. The Public Safety Department would like to lend this vehicle to St. Lucie County service partners to go out into our community to provide COVID-19 testing, vaccination, and other medical services needed. Lending this vehicle to other service providers will maximize the potential and effectiveness of the vehicle and enhance the medical services provided in the community. Staff recommends board approval for the medical testing and vaccination utility van to be loaned to St. Lucie County service partners, and for the chair to sign all documents as prepared by the county attorney's office.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Barts.
Second.
Second by Townsend. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, commissioners.
All right. As we come to the end of the agenda, Mr. Tipton, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, our next regular meeting will be September 7th, and we then begin our annual budget hearings, and so, we have a tentative budget hearing on September 9th, and our final budget hearing will be on September 23rd. All of those meetings will begin at 6:00 PM.
And trim notices have gone out, and so, those folks in the public who've not, maybe just moved here recently, it's highly suggested that you have any questions, talk to the property appraisers' office on the trim notices. And then, at the public hearings, we likely will have staff here to answer additional questions for those who may have some on their trim notices. We've come to the end of the meeting. I'll accept a motion to adjourn with moving to erosion after that. Thank you very much. We have a motion.
We'll come to order St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is general public comment. Seeing no movement, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of July 27th. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner...
Mitchell.
Mitchell, and seconded by Commissioner Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And then, today, we have a consent agenda. There's nothing for further questions or discussion. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
No, you've got to approve.
I need a motion for the consent.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
There isn't. I have nothing on it.
There is a motion by Commissioner Barts, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now, Commissioner Zdowski, go for it.
We'll call together the mosquito control district meeting on Tuesday, August 17th. Is there any general public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approval of the minutes from the July 6, 2021 meeting.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by Commissioner Zdowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. On a consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion for warrants list 39 through 44.
So moved.
We have a motion by Barts, seconded by...
Second.
Zdowski. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have no items scheduled on the regular agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We will come together as a sustainability board?
No, we won't.
Oh, what?
That's mine. Don't you want to do environmental?
No, go ahead. I was just helping you move to that next level.
Oh, well, thank you. Do you want me to take it?
I'm hungry, sorry.
You want me to take it?
Please do.
Okay. Okay, so, we come together as a sustainability district, open to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board? See no movement. I'll close public comment. Motion for approval of the minutes from May 18.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
There are no items on the consent agenda. There is nothing on the regular agenda. And get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, now, it's your turn.
We'll call the, order the environmental control board. First item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board. Next item is the approval of minutes.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitchell, seconded by Barts. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. No items on the consent or regular agenda. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, now, it's your turn.
We'll call the, order the environmental control board. First item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board. Next item is the approval of minutes.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitchell, seconded by Barts. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. No items on the consent or regular agenda. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.[1786.33]